Good evening and welcome to the special presentations portion of the city council meeting on April 18. The first presentation will be the Arbor Day proclamation. And this proclamation will be presented to Amar Anzari, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Betsy Adams, our Interim Parks and Community Service Director. Okay, do you have a box of tissues? Give me a box of tissues. Okay. Okay, if we could have Mr. Anzari and Ms. Adams come forward. Good evening, it is with my great honor and pleasure to present a proclamation recognizing April 28, 2017 as National Arbor Day. Accepting this proclamation tonight is Amar Anzari, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, and Betsy Adams, our Interim Parks and Rec. Director. Ahmad and Betsy, would you please, oh, you're here already, I'm sorry. Arbor Day is an annual observance that celebrates the role of trees in our lives and promotes tree planting and care. As a formal holiday, it was first observed in 1872 in Nebraska. Most holidays celebrate something that has already happened and is worth remembering, like the day someone was born. However, Arbor Day reflects the hope for the future. The trees planted in observance of Arbor Day show a concern for future generations. The simple act of planting a tree represents a belief that the tree will grow and someday provide wildlife, habitat, erosion control, beauty, and inspiration for ourselves and our children. Our community members planted two trees at the Marchfield Community Center as part of our Community Day of Service on February 25. Adoption of this proclamation is a first step in the city's application for Tree City USA designation and is an initiative in the city's Momentum Mobile Strategic Plan. It is my pleasure now to present the following proclamation. And it's here nicely framed. And it reads as follows: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world as, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize April 18 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Thank you so much. And here's the proclamation, it's just beautiful. And encourage our community to plant trees as well in their yards, you know, shade, you know, you'll have birds nesting and all those wonderful things that really represent life. So, would you like to say something?
Parks and Community Services was very pleased to have the rec. center over at Marchfield Park picked for the beautification project. We plan to display the proclamation from the council over at the community center. We think the children that use the programs over there will enjoy seeing it on a daily basis, and we thank the council.
And as much as Public Works involvement, both from special districts, division, and maintenance and operation involvement we have with trees, planting and maintaining, the department is very pleased to receive this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you both so much. Take it. Okay, the second presentation will be Officer of the Quarter, the Fourth Quarter Officer, Don, I hope it's Gouvion, I hope I'm not mispronouncing it. Yes? Great, wonderful. Mayor Gutierrez will provide initial introduction of award and invite Chief Ontiveros to speak and present a certificate of recognition and handcuffs to Officer Don Gouvion.
Just really quick, want to say congratulations on behalf of the city council for this amazing award. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and have the Chief Ontiveros provide some introductory remarks.
Don, if you want to come up, that'd be great. Up to where the mayor is, please. Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Roberts nominated Officer Gouvion for recognition as Officer of the Fourth Quarter for 2016. This nomination is not for Officer Gouvion's ability to handle a large number of calls or for making the ultimate arrest. The recognition is for the sustained leadership she provides to her fellow school resource officers on a daily basis. Officer Gouvion is currently performing as a robe officer wherein she responds and works closely with all our schools within the district. In addition to responding to in-progress and past calls when she's not in that chair, she has been readily accessible providing patrol investigators with intelligence and assistance with their ongoing investigations. She has identified several groups within the schools that were out to conduct some nefarious activity, and she was personally responsible for eradicating one of those up-and-coming gangs by arresting some of the key players and identifying each member. Officer Gouvion earned the trust of the families and was able to get into their homes to mentor the incorrigible juveniles and their families as an effective intervention measure. She has been tasked to create an emergency response plan for Moreno Valley Unified School District. The plan was designed to assist scene commanders and officers who may respond to an emergency situation in or near a school. Each school site will be represented in the final product. For each site, a comprehensive school description will be available. Links will be available that point to photos of various locations on the campus that may benefit the management of an emergency response team. The photos of the key sites on each campus are identified to include locations of utility shut-offs, roof access locations, as well as site maps and overhead photographs. The emergency response plan will be uploaded to Moreno Valley PD's mobile data computers in their patrol cars, as well as our home computers, our main computer system at the station, for the purpose of instant accessibility by patrol and supervision in the event of a crisis, or even in the event of a routine patrol-generated call. Sergeant Roberts has been monitoring the progress of this assignment and has found it to be of the highest quality. He indicates it's easy to see that extensive time and effort was put into the development of the product. Officer Gouvion always exceeds our expectations. She conducts anti-drug and anti-bullying presentations throughout the district and has been requested as a guest speaker to encourage students on the value of integrity and doing the right thing in spite of their surroundings and/or economic disadvantages, sharing her own testimony of growing up in an underprivileged gang-infested area. I've personally received several letters and have been approached by school administration to express their gratitude and appreciation for Officer Gouvion. She has been a great asset to their team. For all of these reasons and many, many more, we're very proud to name Officer Don Gouvion the Officer of the Quarter for the Fourth Quarter 2016.
And I would just like to say congratulations again, and what you do for the youth, the at-risk youth, that's really great. So here is the certificate of recognition on behalf of the city council, the City of Moreno Valley, to you and for the Officer of the Quarter, Fourth Quarter, okay? Congratulations. And then, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, Lord, okay. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, and it's such an honor to be working at this station in this city, and to be in a city where we can feel the members of the community and the support that they have for us. We see it as we're out there in the field, and it means a lot. So I just want to say that briefly. Thank you.
Great, okay, awesome. Take a picture. Would you guys like to shake the officer's hand?
Mayor, did she get her handcuffs?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I don't want her to go without those.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Sir, thank you.
The third presentation will be the Recycle All-Stars Award Waste Management. Councilmember Marquez will be speaking and presenting certificates of recognitions. Carol Anderson from Waste Management will also be presenting certificates and gift baskets from her organization. The first one will be the residential awardees, Richard and Diana Ott.
Carol, do you want to, you want to come up here? Come up here.
Yes.
There you go, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Gutierrez, City Council, Staff, City of Moreno Valley, my name is Carolyn Anderson. I'm your Waste Management Representative for the City of Moreno Valley. Tonight, we honor Moreno Valley's 2017 Recycling All-Stars. Our business awardee this year is Chili's Bar and Grill, or it's Grill and Bar, Kathy Stats and her team. And our residential winner today is the Fast Family. They're honored for their exemplary recycling efforts as part of Waste Management's Recycling All-Stars program. We're thrilled to recognize them for their exemplary actions, for doing their part to recycle often and recycle right. Each individual action helps conserve natural resources as we work together to help the City of Moreno Valley reach its state mandated, excuse me, mandated recycling goals. As part of the program, Waste Management's drivers submit nominations from their respective routes based on several criteria, including how often the cart or bin is placed at the curb and sent out for collection, and the cleanliness of the container, meaning there are no contaminants such as household garbage or green waste placed in with the recyclables. Now, at this time, may I bring them up? I'd like to present, if I could ask, please, Chili's Grill and Bar, Kathy Stats and her team to come forward. Yay! Good job for you.
Waste Management's side. Even better. And have a proclamation?
Yes. See that.
The City of Moreno Valley would like to recognize, City Council would like to recognize the Chili's Grill and Bar on a very well job done. And we have a certificate here, I'm gonna take this tag off here because it doesn't go with it. And thank you very much for your recognition.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
A few words?
I've only been in Chili's Moreno Valley for about a year and a half, but these are some of the most dedicated team members I've ever worked with. And just to bring this back to them, I know it's trash, but they really take a vested interest in keeping our restaurant clean and Moreno Valley clean. They live here, they work here. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next, it's my honor to bring forward our residential winners, the Fast Family. Please come forward. Congratulations.
Your certificate, from Waste Management. On your goodie.
Also, I'd like to, from the City Council, City of Moreno Valley, certificate of recognition for the efforts you have done to keep the city clean and the green. I want to thank you very much for it.
Excellent job. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers.
The fourth and final presentation for this evening is the Earth Day proclamation, presented by Mayor Gutierrez.
So I'm pleased tonight to present this proclamation for Earth Day. And many may not know, but Saturday, April 22 is considered Earth Day in 2017 this year. So Earth Day marks the 47th anniversary and serves as a reminder of Earth Day 1970, which activated a bipartisan spirit that motivated the passing of Clean Air, Clean Water, and Endangered Species Acts. Many other groundbreaking environmental laws soon followed. This year's theme is called Environmental and Climate Literacy, which is a prerequisite for advancing environmental and climate awareness and accelerating green technology and jobs. I also had the pleasure to attend Naleo Conference, which was about energy, natural resources, and climate change. And I was able to learn a lot of things, especially about renewable energy. And it's really exciting. And I do want to say our city has a climate action plan, so that's something that we're going to be looking at, because I got a lot of great ideas from that conference. So without further ado, I'd like to present this proclamation. The organization wasn't able to come tonight, but in short, it reads: Whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges affecting every community, including large-scale migration, extreme inequality, and poverty of ecosystems, mass extinction of species, and global climate change, whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance the awareness about the environment, inform decision-making, and protect future generations. And where it's also understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generations. Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby recognize April 22 as Earth Day and urge all citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote environmental and climate literacy. Okay? Thank you. Send it over to the organization.
The regular council meeting will resume in about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successory Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on April 18, 2017, at about 6:05 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by, do we have Frank here? Frank Wright? No? Okay. Maybe, okay. Okay, how about Rafael? Yeah, usually Frank is here most of the time. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Mark Oriana, Victory Outreach Church.
Everybody with their hands over their heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me to the invocation, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. And, you know, I recall, as I look at the, you know, at the Bible, there's so many invocations calling upon the Lord. And the Apostle Paul calls upon God for the peace that surpasses all understanding. He also prays for wisdom, knowledge, and revelation. And then he affirms that the one that we pray to is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask, think, or pray. So this afternoon, we want to pray for wisdom to fall upon here, upon all the decisions that need to be made, for guidance, the blessings, the power of God to fall here upon this place. Would you please join me in prayer? Father in heaven, we just so thank you this evening for our beautiful city, Lord, and we pray for the endeavors that are going to be discussed here, every official, every decision-maker, Lord, I pray for your peace that surpasses all understanding, that will be here with them, guiding them, leading them, that it will be your Spirit, oh, my God, that will lead us to the blessings that we need to make our city an extraordinary city, Lord, and we pray this in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Mark, from Victory Outreach Church. All right, we're gonna go ahead and have Madam Clerk roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hakesnare, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanovic, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economy Development Director.
Amar Anzari, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Joel Honavro, Chief of Police.
Abdul Alamat, Fire Chief.
Betsy Adams, Interim Parks and Community Services Director.
Alan Brock, Community Development Director.
Okay, thank you to our staff. Before we hear public comments tonight, I ask that we keep our comments respectful towards each other, especially to the individuals at the podium. If you hear your name called because you turned in a blue speaker slip, please be ready, please stand next to the door, so that way you can approach the podium. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. If you do need a translator, you get double the amount of time, okay? Make it clear. All right? And public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Eight.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and please call the first three. We'll allow the full eight.
Jose Chavez, Jorge Quintero, Ulises Cabrera.
Is Mr. Chavez here? Okay. We'll allow Jorge Quintero. And then if Mr. Chavez comes in a little later, we'll give him an opportunity. Oh, there, oh, no. That's not it. Oh. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind to, okay, interpret?
Ella? Oh. Ya puedo pasar?
Si.
Buenas noches. Mayor Gutierrez, concejales, miembros del staff y público, aquí presentes, ciudadanos de Moreno Valley.
Good night. Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public.
La quiero hablar ahorita de, darle las gracias al señor Marquez por haber asistido a la junta del board.
He would like to thank Councilmember Marquez for assisting the school board meeting.
Y enterarse por su propia cuenta de cómo están malas la, el board, el board de educación de Moreno Valley, las irregularidades que hacen, que nosotros como ciudadanos no nos dejan hablar.
That he became aware with the situation at the board, the irregularities that they do that most citizens are not aware of.
Irregularies como las juntas las empiezan tarde, y nosotros como miembros que queremos dar nuestra opinión no se nos deja. Usted está de testigo, señor Marquez. Y quisiéramos que quisiera que todos los concejales estuvieran presentes ahí por el bien de la educación de nuestros hijos, de nuestra ciudad, y de nuestra comunidad.
A ver, repítamelo, por favor.
Bueno, quisiera que usted, señor Marquez, y todos los concejales estuvieran presentes por el bien de nuestros hijos.
He would like for the council members to be present for the betterment of the community and their children. But originally, he had said that the board, that Councilmember Marquez was present when the board would start their meetings late and not allow them to speak on their items.
Es una manipulación constante.
It's a constant manipulation of the board.
De los resultados de la educación en esta ciudad.
Of the education of the city.
Y yo pienso que así está en todos los, en todos los distritos escolares.
He thinks that it's that way in all of the school districts.
Somos el lugar número 46 en ciencias a nivel de Estados Unidos, 41 de matemáticas, y no se diga lectura.
There are 46 in science, 41 in math, and let's not speak about reading.
Reading.
En los últimos tres años, la educación ha ido decreciendo a niveles muy bajos.
Within the last three years, the education has fallen.
Quiere decir que si seguimos con esa tendencia, en tres años vamos a estar compitiendo con Nuevo México o Mississippi, que ocupan los últimos lugares en educación a nivel de Estados Unidos.
If the education continues to fall, we're going to compete with Mississippi in being one of the lowest in the nation.
Una cosa muy delicada, pues es la educación, es la que va a sacar adelante a este país, a nuestra gente, a nuestros ciudadanos, a nuestros hijos, es que es el futuro de Estados Unidos. Lamentablemente, no se estacionó nada por salvarlos.
It's very important, it's the future of our children, and unfortunately, there's nothing being done.
Yo le pido que pongan muy bien sus ojos en el distrito escolar, y no dejen sola la comunidad. La comunidad los apoyó.
He would like for you to keep a close eye on the board, and don't let the community stand by itself.
Nuestro mayor, nuestro mayor, nuestros concejales tuvieron una alta votación, apoyamos ampliamente a ustedes en su proyecto, y así queremos que nos apoyen nosotros, que sea recíproca ese apoyo.
The mayor received a lot of support and votes, and he wants the council to support them, and he wants the council to reciprocate.
Otra cosa que quisiera mencionar, en la escuela Moreno Valley, donde mi hija va, una de sus compañeras perdió la vida en un tiroteo que hubo el fin de semana, lamentable, lamentable por nuestra ciudad y por nuestra comunidad.
He says that in the school that his daughter attends here in Moreno Valley, one of the students there lost her life in a gunfire. And it's very
It's afortunado.
unfortunate and lamentable that this is happening in our city.
Le mando mis condolencias a esa familia que ahorita está sufriendo.
He sends his condolences to that family that is suffering today.
También le pedimos al señor Ontiveros, jefe de la policía, pues que redoble la vigilancia, que redoble el esfuerzo, porque ha habido fondos para la policía.
He's asking Chief Ontiveros to double the patrolling, that there's been funds available for him to increase patrolling.
Nosotros como ciudadano le dimos el poder a nuestro mayor, y esperamos mucho de él. Tiene usted el poder.
And the citizens have
Y úselo.
Put the faith in the mayor.
Siempre y cuando sea para bien. Gracias.
And he wants the mayor to use it, his power, for the citizens. Thank you.
Gracias Jorge, thank you Jorge. Okay, next two speakers, I believe was Jose Chavez. Did Jose come in? Okay, that's not, okay. All right, we'll go with Ulysses. And who are the other three speakers, so we can have them ready?
Tom Gerelli.
Tom Gerald, okay.
Robert Harris, and Rafael Brugueras.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, council.
Oh, one second, one second, let's fix that. Okay, go ahead.
Evening, council, evening, staff. Good evening to Moreno Valley residents. My name is Ulysses Cabrera. I am running for city council District Four, and I'm here today to let you know a little bit more about myself, why I'm running, because that's a question that I'm getting a lot, as I'm out here speaking to several of the residents in District Four and around the city. So why I'm running is for three things that are very, very important for the future of our city. The first is jobs, and that's a very obvious one. So, this breaks down into several different aspects and factors. The first is actually bringing the jobs here to our city, and there's a lot of different industries, different sectors that we can reach out to and that are coming to our city. One of them is the medical corridor, and that's a big part of the labor market and the way that the labor market is moving in the entire world. Nurses and doctors are never going to go away. The need is always going to be there. So that is something that we should bring here to the city, and I hope that that process continues to move with our economic development. Additionally, the technology sector, things like technicians, engineers, software engineers, all of that stuff, anything that has to do with computers, we need that. That's the way that the labor market is moving. So that's jobs, and bringing them here. Additionally, we have to make sure that the residents in our city are being employed by these companies and these industries and sectors. So I know there's several different programs, like Higher Mobile, and different levels to that, different ways that we can make this happen. So that's jobs. When it comes to education, we also have to, you know, Jorge was talking about that right now. I was actually at that school board meeting as well, and Councilmember Marquez, thank you for being there. I feel like we need more of that, more communication between the school board and the city council. So I will continue to be at those school board meetings and read their agendas and know what they're doing. So just being involved and having that communication to make sure that our kids are being prepared for colleges and universities, and are able to fill these jobs that are coming to our city in the future, to make our city a better place. And lastly, public safety, which is very complicated, but last week, we had a report about the new JPA, and it was very informational, and I know we still have to move forward with that. We need to update the statistics and look at a larger scope, but ensuring the safety of our city as we continue to grow is vital. So, jobs, education, and public safety. I know it goes much, much deeper than what I've spoken here in these three minutes, but that is why I'm running for city council, and I hope you will all vote Cabrera for city council, June 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrera. Next speaker. Tom Gerald.
Good evening, Tom. Good evening, Mayor. Tom Joe, speaking on behalf of myself, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of the staff and the public. You know, I grew up in Cleveland, Ohio, and that has definite ethnic neighborhoods, and I'll tell you, if I was in an Italian neighborhood, I became Tommy Gerelli real quick, so, 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 Eddie, I were Yugoslavian, so. But first of all, I wanted to plug something near and dear to my heart. This Thursday night, the Wind Symphony will be doing its concert right next door at the Conference Center, and I just, you know, I can only describe their music as heavenly. I mean, I go there sometimes, I'm deadbeat, tired, and frustrated, and it just really, it's an uplift. So I just encourage everybody, especially our council members, to not only attend and enjoy, but to support them, you know, because it's quite a gift to the city. It's incredible, and I'm always proud to see Mike Lee is there many, many of the concerts, and as I've said many times, it is a form of economic development, because it's one of those loose spokes, those abstracts we can use to bring industry to our town. I see we got quality entities like that that contribute so much. And on the subject of jobs, Mr. Cabrera brought up jobs, I, something I hope we never revisit again. In the mid-1990s, and I would say the 1990s recession was worse than the 2000s, because we really got the, I mean, not only did the housing market crash, the commercial market was flipped, but the, you know, there was no, the city wasn't fully established, the school district was still very weak, and then March closed, and at least downsized to the reserve base, which really, really flipped us hard, and then Roar Industries pulled out. In the middle of that, a fellow named Larry Martinez, and I encourage you to look up that company, Martinez and Turk, in Rialto now, he had a shop in Riverside, he had outgrown it. He came and knocked on our door, and he asked about coming here. And I had seen his shop. The man had, I don't know if you know what a lathe is, but he had lathes as big as a bedroom. I mean, they were huge. They do direct contracts with the government, you know, just world-class stuff, really, really neat outfit. And I asked Mr. Martinez, well, Rialto got wind of them needing a space, and they snacked them up quick, put them in the thirty acres, gave them some buildings, and, you know, they were off and running. They were up to almost a three hundred workforce for a while. It fluctuates based on their demand. They were running about sixty people in Riverside, and, but I think they averaged probably a hundred, a hundred and some, and that's skilled labor, and that's something we could have built, started to build our cornerstone. So I asked Mr. Martinez, I said, Larry, did anybody from the city, after you went and visited them, come out to see your shop? And nobody ever knocked on his door. So I hope that's something we don't revisit. I'm bluntly very confident, I've seen, I think we've had a real breath of fresh air with our staff, and I know the council's been very committed to jobs across the board, so, but just something I pray we don't fumble that ball again with any good entity. So thank you very much, and look forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker is Robert Harris.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I just wanted to take a little bit of time to thank the staff. They've been doing an amazing job, and I think a lot of time, it's a thankless job, and most of the time, people will get up here and they'll be saying all kinds of bad things, but I think you do an amazing job. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about is just the, a lot of people seem to come up here and they talk about the school board, and problems with the schools, and sure, there are problems with the schools, but, you know, that does not fall under your jurisdiction or the council's jurisdiction. I mean, you know, you can get involved a little bit, but you know what? Quite frankly, if they came over here and told you how you should run the city, you wouldn't like it, and vice versa. They wouldn't, you know, if you went over there and told the school board how to run their school board, they're not going to like it either. I think there's a happy medium where you can get together and share ideas once in a while, but as far as, you know, just everybody coming up here and saying, you have to fix the school board. It's not fair. You have a big city to run. And, you know, anyway, that's about all I had to say. And last week, it was almost like, well, you're not a good mayor if you don't go to the school board, and I don't think that's true. I think that you're a very good mayor, and I think just running, just taking on the responsibility of the whole city is amazing, and not trying to take on the responsibility of the school board also. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. The next speaker was?
Rafael Brugueras, Luis Palomares, Roy Bleeker, and Jose Chavez. That's the last one.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. I have three issues tonight to talk about, and they are all very, very important. The first one is, someone in our city is committing a crime. Again, they are tearing down Ulysses signs. They're not even slashing them, because people will call that vandalism. They're actually cutting down the strips and taking the whole sign and leaving the poles. So that is a crime of itself. Not one, but several of them throughout the city. I'm hoping that the city of Moreno Valley would look out for District Four, and if you see something, say something. Most of you have cameras, take a picture. Call Ulysses, get his card, and call him, let him know that you saw a crime. Number two, I talked to a lot of residents, and I go around putting doorknobs, thousands of them in the last couple of weeks, few weeks, and I got to meet a lot of people, and a lot of people are telling me that Heta Diaz is telling them that the mayor is endorsing him, and that's not true. I got a card right here. Ulysses and Dr. Guitarras, not Heta Diaz. So Heta Diaz is here tonight. I hope he signs a blue slip so he can speak and say the truth, that he shouldn't go around telling people what the mayor is not doing for him. And the second thing is, that I would hope that the assistant manager will repeat what he talked about last year, last week about crime. Crime is down. On Heta Diaz's little profile here, he said that crime is up seventeen percent. And the one thing that the assistant manager stressed last week, that it was not true. Crime went down. So he should get that off his brochure, because people are reading the wrong news. Already, he's starting his campaign wrong. Two things already, and how much more are we going to hear throughout the next several weeks? This is what's good about being involved. This is what's good about picking the right candidate to support, because when you follow these kind of candidates, you get to hear the truth. I know, because I did it for Brian Lawwell, and I heard the truth. And the good thing about it, that I'm in the same district, believe it or not, that District Four was District Three and now is District Four. So I know every house, every dog, and every resident, and I get along with them pretty well, because I tell them exactly how I feel and what's important about District Four. That's the beauty of it. And I meet thousands of them, and they shouldn't be lied to. This is very important for our candidates not to lie to the residents, so maybe they can win. That's not the way we run the city. It should be run fairly. So when you see these signs, look, you see only two people and you don't see the other one.
Next speaker, please.
Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, wow, I learned something today. Thanks for that information. Rafael, that keeps on top of things in the city. I have to come and ask him, and I've been doing this for twenty-something years, because I can't keep up with all the, all of it. Mayor, you're doing a darn good job. I know you can't be here and there. You know, we're trying right now, I believe, this council and this school board's trying to build a bridge between the school and the city, and that's great, because we need that, we really do. But we're always fighting a lot of demons and devils as far as different things that we want to get, like, you know, the planning commission, that shouldn't have went that way. I mean, I could never remember in the history of Moreno Valley, it's been so much problems about a planning commission. You had three different ways you went about it, and Gaiba still wasn't satisfied. Unless you get Lori in there, it's, uh-uh, it's not going to happen. But at least you did the smart thing, and at least put Brian Law back in there and Baker, because they're the right men for, at least for, well, for the next four years, and whatever you're going to do after, that's great too. Now, as far as, wow, I'm just worn out. Okay, as far as Mr. Gaiba, I mean, you know, last week, at the last council, when you said, let's get Brian Law and Baker, and you went for it and said, yeah, Marquez, and that was great, I thank you again for that one, but now we're throwing another monkey wrench in it. Now you want to do something else to try to stop, you know, now you want the extensions again? Wow, when's it going to stop? A waste of time, the community's time, your time, the staff's time? I think the staff does a darn good job in everything they do, but why do you got to make them work five times harder, Gaiba? As far as you vote for every, and you know what, so hip, so hypocrisy, so much hypocrisy with you. Yeah, go ahead and laugh at me, you know, but it's so much hypocrisy on your part. When Brian Law, you know, last time, they said, yeah, we're going to have him for the planning commission, you voted totally no against it, because Lori Nichols wasn't in there, your dame, your friend, whoever she is to you, and then after when they vote for him, you're clapping. Why were you clapping? You voted, you voted no, why would you be clapping? Hypocrisy at its finest. You voted against a senior van, you voted against a Catholic charity, you voted against a food bank, you voted against the homeless shelters, the VA, the USVA, you voted against a Salvation Army, you voted against a court-appointed special advocates for kids that are in foster programs. Hank and Harry? Yeah, your vote is against them. Also, you voted for the overtime for the police, to have a police officer. We need those police officers, and you voted no on that one too. And then you voted no on the OPO team, the POPS team. Why?
Thank you, Luis.
We need that.
The next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Roy Bleeker.
Luis, I never applaud up here except for people who get certificates. So I don't know what you're talking about. It's, and second of all, you don't know why and how I vote, because you've never bothered to ask me. So if you would possibly ask the proper questions, you would get the proper answers. So I think you're rather confused up there, and I'm, okay, just want to clarify that for you.
Okay. All right. Next speaker, Roy.
National income tax filing deadline day today. If that doesn't upset you enough, everyone who totes a lunch pail to work, every mother that gets up at four-thirty in the morning in Moreno Valley to get her kids to school and then go to a job, nationally, you have not paid your tax bill totally yet till Sunday. But that's not even the worst of it. If you live in, if you're privileged enough to live in California, that date is May 1st. You do not, you did not, you, in California, will not put a one penny in your pocket till May 1st. Now, I wonder how that's going to work after November, when the gas taxes double. We have a hotel tax. All these taxes add up. Almost five trillion dollars in the United States of America is what we pay. A tax is a penalty on work and investment. You want to create jobs? Cut taxes and regulation. Highlight the companies that are going to bring the jobs. Show me in this Moreno Valley strategic plan, the pictures of the World Logistics Center, or the medical corridor, or anything else, because the only thing we have to sell is potential. Because our median household income from 2000, adjusted for inflation, is down thirty percent. That is unconscionable. And you want education? Yes. And if we do not fix the education level, we will not have high-technology jobs. Our people will not fill them because they do not qualify. Because we have a school district, eighty percent of our students are not meeting the standard in mathematics. How are you going to get the technical jobs even if they come here? They're not going to be filled by Moreno Valley residents, because we don't have the workforce to supply them. That should be the A number one priority in this city, no matter, of every resident, no matter if you hold the mayor's title or you're sweeping the sidewalk. And if it's not, this community will not move forward. This community will not reach its potential. It will keep going downhill. It's went downhill thirty percent. You wonder why high-end restaurants or anything are not here? We do not have money in our pockets to buy it, to pay it, because government is picking our pocket at every opportunity, and that has got to stop. You've got to focus on education, you've got to focus on job opportunities, you've got to put the policies in place to make it work, else it won't. And that's what you are elected for. You all ran for it, and it starts at that Dais, and it starts at the Dais down there.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker, please.
Jose Chavez and Hector Diaz.
Seeing Jose's not here, Hector Diaz?
Hi, good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and city residents of the city of Moreno Valley.
One second. Madam Clerk? Okay, there you go. Madam Clerk, okay, there you go.
Hi, my name is Hector Diaz. I'm a candidate for City Council in District Four and a business owner in the city of Moreno Valley for twelve years. Overall, eighteen years as a business owner. And let me tell you that the number one reason why I'm running, because I've been asked the same question as the other, probably the other candidates as well, is one of the issues is public safety. As I've been talking to a lot of the residents in the District Four, public safety is the number one concern. And my plan to work on public safety is, there's actually many reasons. And one of them will be reduce the response time. My other plan is pretty much put more patrol officers on the street and have staff working behind the desk instead of having a sworn officer behind a desk or doing clerical work. That's my goal for public safety. And I think experience matters in this case because I do have some law enforcement experience. And I also have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And also my next point will be making the city more business friendly. As a business owner, I have a lot of experience, as a business owner in the city, especially in the city of Moreno Valley. I've been conducting business here for twelve years. So I've been through the whole process and I know that in city government, experience matters. And let me answer Rafael's question, I mean, his question in regards to me stating that I've been telling people that I've been endorsed by you, Mr. Gutierrez. I am not here to talk about hearsay. I don't pay attention to that. I am a professional. I respect people. I have discipline and I'm not here to play child's games. And like I said, I mean, I do not tell people that I've been endorsed by you. And I am not here to play child's games. I'm not here to play those type of games. I think people that know me, they know the type of person that I am. That's why they treat me with respect. And it takes a lot to be well disciplined. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much. Hope, hopefully I can come with your support, June sixth.
Thank you, Hector. Any more speakers?
None.
Okay, and I just want to say that I've also heard it as well. You know, I went to door knocking for Ulysses as well and I have heard it a couple of times. So I do hope, you know, that it stops. All right, okay, so we're going to go to our consent calendar. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendars, A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council would like to pull an item. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing comments. If you want something pulled or discussion, please push your speaker button. Seeing there's none, public comments on consent items.
Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff and residents and our guests. You know, one thing I've learned about the consent calendar is a very important thing that comes up every couple of weeks in the city council meetings. I run into the residents in District Four and I had a gentleman talk about how we failed him to fix the roads. And he was trying to blame the mayor. And I say, no, you can't blame the mayor because you got to give him a chance. And not knowing what was going to come up this week on item eight, and I hope that the Public Work Director will talk about that. Because that's very important to know that the city of Moreno Valley with the council members are going to approve a five-year project to fix our streets, okay? If they will go to the websites, and I keep saying every time I get a chance, sign up, go to the agenda or you get it sent to you by the city clerk. She does a wonderful job sending everybody the information, twelve dozen in advance. Here it is in front of you, I have it in front of me. We're doing wonderful, the mayor's doing a great job with the council member's approval and the staff is doing a wonderful job. My second one is A nine. I would like to see the assistant city managers to expound on emergency, especially to the new council member, David Marquez. Because it talks about who gets there first. And if nobody's around, then David Marquez, if he's there in this district, he's responsible for the emergency of it. Because it talks about emergencies and it does talk about the responsibility of a council member. It does, I read it, okay? Okay, that's it, those are the two most important items, the other one I have to wait for, E. But again, everybody has the same opportunity as I have. This is how I gain my experience. I may not have the best knowledge in books, but I got a heck of a lot of experience on hand. When you come here, week after week, month after month, year after year, you learn from the very best in how they talk and what they say. I have picked up on a lot of things and I hear a lot of lies sometimes, fake news, and I hear the truth. And I'm going to expose those, not by my words, but what I read and find on these things. Oh, I like that, that's all the good stuff right here. So I maybe act like a fool some days, but that's okay. God uses the foolish things in this world to bring himself glory and to bring truth. And I'm going to do that until the day I can't do it no longer.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker, please.
Luis Palomares.
Rafael is right about the plan. Actually, right after Luis, I'll ask the city manager staff if you want to give an update on that.
Yeah, I want to update on, I would like to speak after it, but, oh, wow. I agree with Rafael, you know, he reads everything. I have to call and ask him, hey Rafael, what's going on? Fill me in a little bit because I'm always somewhere doing a lot of different things, a lot of different places. Anyway, like I said, I believe that the staff's doing a good thing. I believe the council's doing a good job. How better to not go there? And as far as everything that's going on in our city, I think it's great. You know, and we just got to go forward, but we keep on getting all these monkey wrenches thrown in there. We got to just keep on going forward and quit wasting staff's time and council's time and the community's time. Let's just go forward and do the right thing for the city, not the right thing for one or two or three or a handful, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Go ahead, Ahmad, if you want to give a, or assistant city manager, just a little brief update of that, of that item on the consent calendar.
Certainly, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. What's before you is a slight update to the emergency incidents policy and the update.
Oh, not that one.
I'm sorry.
There's the, it's A eight. It had to do about Moreno Valley's, it's our plan for the roads and capital improvement.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. The A eight that Mr. Burguerras referred to is our annual submittal to RCTC for our local roads, Measure A funds. As council is aware, Measure A is spent on the transportation projects. And what this item does is outlays the five-year plan for RCTC's approval as well as the maintenance of effort for the three point eight million dollars of Measure A that City of Moreno Valley gets for the transportation projects.
Okay, thank you. Next three speakers, please.
No more speakers.
Okay, all right. Sure, sure. Yeah, okay, Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, just real quick on A nine that Rafael brought up. Our city public safety subcommittee had reviewed the policy on my part due to the fact that there was an incident that occurred in District Three that I was denied access or information on the police activity. I brought it up at a committee, subcommittee. With all the members involved, we decided to change that procedure. The PIO of the Sheriff's Department handles the information from the scenes. The city's PIO handles the information from the city's side of it. I wasn't aware of any of that. So we did change it and that's what it is tonight to change it. Rest of our, my, rest of my colleagues up here are very informed on the procedure of that. So I just wanted to bring that up and let the public know that we, the council members, aren't given that. I'm not going to say the right, but we have people in place to do that and they're the, called the PIOs. And the Sheriff's Department and the city do have those in place. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, second, a motion by Baca and second by Marquez. Please vote. And it's approved four oh. We're going to go to our public hearings. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the bailiff. So E one is public hearing for delinquent abatement report by the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. Adrienne Ryan, our fire marshal will give you a brief report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. Before you this evening is a resolution concerning nuisance abatement from 2016. Each year, Fire Prevention inspects approximately seventeen hundred vacant parcels that may be in need of some sort of nuisance abatement, whether it's weeds, trash, junk or debris. Parcels receive three notices to abate if necessary. If they are not properly abated within that timeframe, Fire Prevention goes ahead and has them abated by their third-party contractor. Before you is a list of parcels abated by Fire Prevention in 2016 and a resolution to place these abatements and costs on the 2017-18 tax rolls for cost recovery. Fire Prevention expended approximately fifty-six thousand dollars in 2016 abating parcels that did not do it on their own with our due notice. I am here for any questions you may have.
Okay, please click the speaker slip, actually the speaker button. Nobody has any questions? Okay, any, okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Rafael Burguerras.
Okay, Mr. Rafael Burguerras, if you can please approach.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents and guests. This is the, what I've been saying this evening, the one nice thing about when you are campaigning for someone, you really get to see the district and you see the needs of the district. And you can see what the water drought has done to the properties and what the rains have done to the properties. And it's true, a lot of the properties are just wild, really wild. You know, and I've seen hundreds of them and there's hundreds of more that really do take care of their property. I mean, I've seen some nice lawns, nice areas, people do care. There are others that may, I'm going to give everybody the benefit of doubt because that's just my nature. They're busy, they don't have the income or they don't have the equipment. But when it's going to cost taxpayers dollars to take care of their need and they don't want to reimburse the taxpayers, then that's what I believe the marshal, the fire chief is talking about. I support what he's trying to do on this item because I walk the streets and I see them. So by giving the fine, especially just hearing her, the speaker, saying that we give them three warnings. I mean, imagine going to a judge and the judge give you a break three times. On the fifth, on the fourth one, he's going to do one or two things. Either he's going to put you in jail or he's going to make you do community service, the hard way. Because he's going to do something to you, he's going to take away your license. He's going to do something to get you. You know, in America, without ID, you can't go too far. You know, that's just the way it is unless you steal somebody else's, you know? But in America, it's pretty tough. But I believe what the fire chief is saying is true. And it's sad that we have to go this way. This is not the way the city wants to make their money. We don't want to find people to make that kind of money. But we also don't want the taxpayers to flip the bill either. We want the residents to be responsible to their properties. That's all we're asking. You can hire kids, you know, whatever it takes, you can do better. There are people out there that are trying to do better, help them. I see it, you can do better.
Thank you, Rafael. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Any council deliberation? Seeing there's none, I entertain a motion by council to approve task recommendations number two through four.
I, so moved.
A move by Baca. A second by Marquez. Please vote once it appears. Okay, and it's approved four oh. We're going to move, we didn't have any items pulled, so we're going to move to reports. No general business either. City council reports on regional activities.
Mayor?
Yes.
There's speakers for item H one.
Oh, okay.
Gerald and Roy Blacker.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of staff and the public, both here in the chambers and watching at home on MTV three or on the internet. As I have said a number of times before, these regional activity reports are, in my opinion, a great service. Again, I don't know who thought of it, but it was a good call. I'm thankful because there's a lot of activities the city's involved in that go on outside the city and, but they come back to affect, you know, how we, what kind of city we ultimately have or what kind of fees we're going to pay. So they're very, very valuable, so I thank the council for continuing with them. I have a suggestion since, and I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've added up some money for the JPA, for the police, inter-police, you know, inter-city police department there. And I think we should get a report on that as we go along. I don't think it'd be terribly lengthy and, because we understood the overview last week, it'll now go to other cities and, you know, there'll be a lot of probably things off calendar here that maybe we should be enlightened about. And in saying that, I'll tell you, I'm in no way sold on it yet, you know, the jury's out with me. You know, we're reinventing the wheel, basically creating a whole new sheriff's department so that, you know, I'm not on board, but I'm willing to listen. And I think the public should have the information, especially since we're, I believe, spending money, you know, public funds to perceive this as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next speaker, please.
At a recent March JPC meeting, it was brought up about a program. The Manufacturing Aerospace Research Service, or MARS. It was pointed out how the JPC or JPA, March JPA, was bringing technology jobs and education and educating our kids. and educating our kids with a program to provide for those jobs. The one startling fact to me was they were participating with Valverde School District, and no mention of Moreno Valley Unified School District. I even made a phone call to Moreno Valley Unified School District and asked them, "Are you participating?", and they said, "No." It's very disturbing. And again, I do this to show the link between all our government agencies and education. Because as I read on this agenda, I see school district, city joint task force. That is a task force that should be working on these projects and problems and trying to solve these. I've been to many of those meetings, and I have not seen a lot of that going on. I've seen a lot of contention, fighting and arguing and going on turf. We should not be arguing over turf. We should be, we should be the one, number one thing you should have is how it's going to benefit all the residents of this community, all 200,000. We should not be fighting amongst each other, we should not be marking territory. We should be working to build this community up. And when we start that, maybe we will see some daylight at the end of the tunnel. It's very disturbing to me that we do not, that I hear from all that, because Mr. Quintero come up here and said, "Look at all the people that are showing up and are concerned about this. It's on the blogs. They're calling into radio shows. They're concerned about what's going on in the city. They're concerned about their kids. They're concerned about the RTCC money, that they drive down that freeway 24/7 that's plugged, that we keep paying more and more and more, and our roads across the board keep getting worse and worse and worse." We're 44 among all states, again, in roads. We're number one, just like we were in education. We're number 45 in education in California. This is something that we should be focusing on, and we're getting charged premium price. We're not getting premium value, and that hurts everybody. And if we don't stop that, again, do you want to change the image of this city?
Any more speakers? Oh, okay. All right. We're going to go to March Joint Powers Authority. Brief, it was a very brief report. Providing the update from the April 12 meeting, the JPC reviewed and approved a proposal to develop a commercial center called the Veterans Plaza, 215 Van Buren Northwest Center. The plaza will have two hotels, sixty-four thousand square feet of retail mixed-use, two sit-down restaurants, two fast-food sites, and a gas station with convenience store and a car wash. We also received an update from the March JPA Representatives' annual trip to Washington, DC to meet with federal agencies that impact March JPA operations in the region. That concludes my report, and we'll have Mayor Protem Baca for the Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the last meeting, and we discussed the upcoming toll lanes on the 15 freeway, and for the first time, we have toll roads in Riverside County, which includes the 91 freeway, and now we're going to work on the 15 from Corona to the Cahalko Road. And the good news is car pullers, IM1, with three or more, and with a transponder, you can get a free ride, with the exception of heading east on weekdays from 4:00 to 6:00. But all other times, you can travel the toll roads at no cost if you have three or more riders in your car. In addition, on April 12, the board unanimously voted to support Senate Bill 132, which will invest more than $427 million in critical transportation projects in Riverside County.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Baca. Riverside Transit Agency report by Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, we have some good news for the college students, excuse me, that attend UCR. The board extended their agreement with UCR for the popular U-Pass program, which students to write RTA fixed route systems for free. Similar programs are in place at Cal Baptist, La Cern, Moreno Valley College, Mountain San Santo College, Norco College, and Riverside City College. So if you're a college student out there, excuse me, you get your, get a, sign up for your free passes, and you don't have to, to pay for the bus fare. Also, RTA is teaming up with Gardena's Market to celebrate Earth Day on April 22 by giving away prizes and free bus passes. RTA will be at the, at the market located at 25065 Sudden Mead Boulevard between the hours of 11:00 AM and noon time. Customers can spin a wheel for a chance to win one and seven-day passes. So, if you feel lucky, you don't have to go to Vegas, just come on out there and spin the wheel. And that concludes my, my report. Thank you.
Okay. And a report by Mayor Protem Baca, she's on the school district, city joint task force.
Thank you. And Roy, I didn't see you there today. But today, for the first time in over eight months, the Joint Task Force Commission held its meeting, and in addition to the city, it was representatives from Lake Paris State Park, Moreno Valley Unified School District, and Moreno Valley College. They all, all these agencies sent representatives to the, to the meeting today, which was held here at the REC Center. The task force talked about efforts to improve traffic safety near schools, including monitoring and enforcement by Moreno Valley Police Department, safety education and reminders by the Moreno Valley Unified School District, and evaluating layered class release time and fences in traffic medians. The city also, the city is also encouraging contractors doing work near school sites to do the work around the school's schedule. And in fact, the Pigeon Pass will be closed north of where Vista Heights is, and it's going to be done during the summer, and they're going to speed up the work so that it doesn't impact the school traffic. So that, that's something that they're doing. Moreno Valley College is working closely with both school districts on multiple programs, including college promise to encourage enrollment of students taking full class schedules and gear up for middle school students. Moreno Valley College, Lake Paris, and the city identified a need to work together on trail safety, especially for hikers who are not using improved trails at the college and near Lake Paris. I also want to say that very important for our kids to have water safety, and Lake Paris has a lifeguard program during the summer. My daughter worked, was trained there as a lifeguard, and right after that, she got a job at what was a, like, a water slides and water park that doesn't exist anymore, but that was, it's a very, very good program. If you have children, school age, you know, enroll them in this lifeguard program, junior lifeguard. It's, it's very important. And they also have free swimming lessons, so that your children are safe around waters of body. So please take advantage of this. Lake Paris is a beautiful, beautiful state park, and it's here in Moreno Valley. So, I hope that you take advantage of that. And we also spoke regarding the school district and the city and working together, and besides that, I want to say that I am having conversations with the superintendent regarding the concerns that parents have brought to me, but it's as an advocate for the community, not as someone that's on the, on the city council, because we have our own jurisdictions. But the superintendent, Dr. Martin Rex Kitzadora, is very open to fixing problems, and yes, they made a mistake at the last meeting, and they, you know, there was a lot of people there to speak, but I'm sure that Dr. Kitzadora is going to improve the relationship with the school board, the school district, and the parents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Baca. Councilmember Guyba, SCAG.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, SCAG, that stands for Southern California Association of Governments, just in case you don't really know what that means, so I'm going to repeat it so that you guys get it. The Regional Council Conference is coming up this May 4th and 5th at the JD Marriott Desert Springs Resort and Spa. That's where we'll be doing our final voting on our new officers to be there. You're always welcome to participate. Anybody can buy a ticket, so to speak, and, and go, so that'd be okay. There's a partner event today and tomorrow, scheduled up in Sacramento, so unless you want to fly up there tomorrow morning, which I will be doing. Fifth Annual California Passenger Rail Summit is scheduled. Couple few highlights, I'll just, there's a lot of stuff that goes on with SCAG, so I'm not going to go into detail, but you're more than welcome to email me and ask to get on the SCAG, SCAG bulletin and stuff that we put together up in the council office. Regional Council approves recommended target for regional GHG's emission reductions. They also approved the additional support for sustainability planning grants, for which City of Moreno Valley got a grant for that. The 2016 RTPSCS amendments, that's the Regional Transportation Plan. We have to amend it periodically, it's a living document, and that's been amended, and the new, the new document will be up for review for anybody who'd like to review it. You can go to the SCAG website, get a lot of this stuff. The delegation meets with the lawmakers in Sacramento. We went there March 14th, 16th, I think I've already reported on that. A great time, I was also there for League of Cities as well. We're going to be joining Government Brown and the state leaders on the road repair bill. A lot of the SCAG representatives and local representatives were there in Riverside. The Go Human Media Campaign relaunches across the region. All those things are certain representations for SCAG. Couple more. SCAG headquarters is changing in downtown Rivers, downtown Los Angeles. It's going to be the new building right across the street, the one they're building, the big, huge one, that's where we're going to, so we've already signed a lease on that one, so we'll be there. Also, I want to read for you an email I did receive. I'm, I'm very proud and honored that I can continue to serve this city and this region. Some of you don't understand, realize that maybe, I'm the District 69 Regional Council member representing both Paris and Moreno Valley on SCAG, as well as on the Transportation Committee. Said, "Dear Committee Member Guyba, congratulations on your recent appointment to the Open Data, Big Data, Smart and Connected SCAG Region Committee. At the April 6 Regional Council Meeting, President Michelle Martinez announced your appointment to the committee." So I'll get an opportunity to serve on that one, which is an excellent opportunity to spread information about the, the Open Data progress, because SCAG has some, one of the largest databases in the entire world, if not just the United States. So, that's that for SCAG, and I thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I'd like to start my comments by asking Police Chief Ontiveros to address the shooting that happened over the weekend. We had someone mention it during public comments, and Mayor Protem Baca asked if Chief Ontiveros would speak to it as well. Joel?
Good evening, Mayor and council. We've experienced three homicides so far in 2017. Even one life lost to violence is too many, and that's clear, and I think we all agree on that. Unfortunately, murder is neither predictable nor preventable in most cases. The homicides that have occurred in Moreno Valley in 2017 are consistent with other homicides we've experienced in recent years. In 2017, one was a domestic murder-suicide, and the other two appear, and I stress, appear to be gang-related. Generally speaking, these homicides are not stranger murders, but rather, they occur between people who know one another. Another major factor we have identified as being related to homicides in our city for the past several years is the scourge of illegal street drugs. We have seen people killed over as little as $400 or $500 in marijuana. Marijuana's legal now, and in, in most cases, but people have been murdered for that tiny amount of street drug. It's important for the public to remember that these crimes have not been random violence, for the most part. That's, that's not to say that innocent people haven't been killed or injured, but in most cases, people involved in homicides in this city have something in common. They've either been in an intimate relationship with one another, or they have been involved in activity that put them at greater risk of becoming an intended or accidental victim. So, what I would put out to the public today is, is that clearly we're concerned about the loss of life, and we're concerned about any injury that our residents sustain. Generally speaking, if you're not involved in, in one of these things that I've enumerated here tonight, the likelihood that you're going to become a victim of violent crime is very low in the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Chief Ontiveros. A couple of other things I wanted to talk about, just very briefly. Some, one of the speakers mentioned in public comments about taxes and the premium that our residents pay, and I wanted, we grabbed this slide from your last budget presentation. I wanted to, to remind the public about the excellent job that the council does in terms of being fiscal stewards and making sure that we get the most out of every tax dollar. You'll recall this slide, this is the general fund revenue that the city gets, and we've divided it by the number of residents we have, so that's the per capita number. And you can see there, Moreno Valley, in comparison to other similar-sized cities, is exceptionally low when it comes to the revenue that we get in terms of our taxes, fees, and fines. And so I just wanted to remind the, the public of the excellent job that the council's doing and really getting a lot done and doing more with less. So I wanted to put that out there as well, especially on Tax Day, and since it did come up during public comments. I wanted to share some other statistics with, with you with regard to the mayor's telephone town hall. As you know, the city held the first one ever on March 29, and we thank the mayor for bringing this to the community. It's been overwhelming in terms of the positive response that we've received. Over 3,500 residents participated in that one-hour phone call, including 182 who called into the Spanish simulcast. Mayor Gutierrez answered a total of 22 questions during that one-hour call. An additional 113 people were in the queue waiting to ask a question. There was an option for callers to leave voicemails, and staff has responded to residents with answers to more than 68 questions from the 47 callers who left their contact information. So we've done that since March 29, and the night of the event. The call wasn't just talk. One resident's request to fix a pothole was handled the morning after the telephone town hall, and city staff has addressed or is addressing many of the issues brought up by residents, such as directing traffic enforcement to certain areas in the city and guiding residents to other resources. Special thanks to the media team for assisting with the logistics of this, and particularly to Public Information Officer Kimberly Sutherland for spearheading the staff work on this. Your staff has been busier than ever recently, putting together within the last month alone special events such as the Public Safety Expo and the Springtacular Events. We're gearing up for the annual Memorial Day ceremony, and while Parks and Community Services shoulders much of the load in planning and coordinating our upcoming Signature of July 4 events, the logistics for the Parade and Family Fun Fest events really require citywide planning. So we're honored to be able to bring those events to the community. We appreciate the council's continued support in funding those, and I just want to make sure the department teams know how much we appreciate them. And as you know, providing service that soars is an ongoing initiative that we have at the staff level, and we're always receiving acknowledgements of the positive service-minded focus that we share as your staff. Just the past week, I've been struck by the number of messages I've been receiving from our customers, completely unsolicited, and so I wanted to take a little bit of time this, this evening and acknowledge, again, just within the last week, maybe 10 days, I've received unsolicited compliments via email, through the website, notes left at the counter. These are a handful of the, the staff that have been complimented by our customers just in the last week or so. That first one is Chris Cox. He is one of our employees from Fire Prevention. Chris assisted a visitor at the counter by scheduling a prompt fire inspection. That customer took the time to drop us a note, and thank Chris for his help. Danae Scott is also a staff member in Fire Prevention. A visitor rated her assistance as excellent, and also wrote, "Chris and Danae are awesome." Land Development, Larry Gonzalez is one of our longtime employees. We received praise for Larry, for his role in helping make a residential project a reality that came from a developer. Building and Safety, Tammy Macy is one of our exceptional staff members in that department. We received a comment praising her for the speed, professionalism, and courtesy she provided while assisting a- while assisting a local company. In the Planning Department, Grace Espinoza Salcedo received a special thank you card from a customer that had visited the public service counter and was helped by Grace. And another planning employee, Summer Louie, provided outstanding assistance by helping a developer get his project off to a positive start. So I appreciate your indulgence-
Great.
...and letting me thank these employees and just sharing with you, again, these unsolicited comments that just come in from our customers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's give our staff an applause. Okay. To the Attorney?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember. Just a brief announcement, and I thank you. We did successfully fill the position of the Deputy City Attorney one. Mr. Darren Ziegler will be joining us May 8th. He has passed background and physical. So I look forward to introducing each one of you to him in person.
Is he here tonight?
He is not here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I will do that when, obviously, at the next opportunity.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Guyba, closing comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you. First of all, thank you for explaining about the Climate Action Plan. I'm honored to say that I was at the Planning Commission when we approved that plan, and so it's kind of nice to see that it's, we are forward-thinking at that point in time, and it's coming forward and really helping us out. So thanks again for mentioning that. Alan Brock, if you could really shortly, you were sharing with me our moval, beautiful, another candidate we had that's when we started that program off. Could you share a little bit about that?
My pleasure, Councilmember. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, City of Moreno Valley residents. We had our second volunteer community cleanup this past weekend on Saturday, and just briefly, it was a well-attended event. We had some great help from Moreno Valley College. They have a volunteer group that assisted us. They all worked very hard on this project. We cleaned the yard. We planted multiple drought-tolerant plants. We planted one tree for this resident. We placed an underlayment barrier down and filled the entire yard with a very thick layer of, excuse me, mulch and bark that will help prevent weeds from coming back in this yard. It was a really good event. It went really quick with all the good, hard work. We had great weather. Volunteers worked hard, as I said, and the yard has been immensely improved, so.
Thank you, Alan. And Roy, thanks for mentioning the JPC Mars Program. I had an opportunity to get that kicking off before, when I was previously on the JPC, so it's nice to know that it's still going forward. I do keep in touch with it, and I've been invited to some of the events. Two weeks ago, it's the first year I've missed the Easter Bunny time, but I was invited to the Pitch, Run, and Hit Competition at the Shadow Mountain Park, where I spent a couple of hours there helping out with that program. They had the next weekend, Easter weekend, they also, Saturday, they had the rest of it. Winners of those competitions will go on to a regional and from regional to state. Just as an update, tomorrow morning, I fly out to Sacramento for the League of California Cities on what we call a Legislative Action Day. I won't belabor that issue too much, but we have a lot of things to talk about and a lot of people to see. Speaking with Stenworth, Bloom, Friedman, Lowe, Bloom, Atkins Beale, all of the SB programs that we do legislative work on behalf of the city and the region. This is with the, what we call the Riverside County Region. So I'll be flying up there. I believe Marquez will be, Mr. Marquez will be joining me, and I will be also up there with several other people from League of Cities in Riverside Division, as well as the president of our division, which is Riverside Councilman. And we'll just, yeah, we'll try to lobby for some of these bills so that we can get them going. Also, if you get a chance to get out to Shadow Mountain, we have that all-inclusive park. It is almost finished. Am I correct about that? Betsy, would you like to share just a little bit? I appreciate it.
I wouldn't say almost finished. We've got one other piece of equipment coming. We're looking at early summer for the official opening after some of the turf recovers.
Thank you. I was out there during the Pitch, Run, and Hit, and it was, it's really looking good, and it's a first for all of us. This past Saturday, I had a Java with Jeff. It was fairly well-attended. We had some good, rousing conversations on some topics. I'll be having another one in two months, and so I invite you to always come out and visit with me face-to-face so that we can have some discussions and answer your questions. And for my final note, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our Planning Commission Alternates, who spent two years working very diligently to serve this community. I was hoping that we would have them, as alternates, move up to the council seats. It's not looking like that would happen, and I want to apologize to them and thank them for all their hard work. And thank you all.
And then it looks like we had a speaker that we missed?
Roy Blackert.
Can you tell us which item this is?
Wants to speak on City Manager's Report and City Attorney's Report.
Okay. And City Attorney, did you have a report? I don't think you did, right?
Nothing specific.
Okay, nothing specific.
Brief announcement, yeah.
It was a request on there that I have, same with the H2.
Okay.
H2. It was addressed, and I would point out if you, on that, on the chart that was shown on the general fund budget, those communities that are up on the top and are generating revenue, look at their per capita income. I bet you they're not down 30% from 2000, the year 2000, on buying power, and I bet you they have a very good jobs-to-housing ratio, which Moreno Valley does not. That could be factors of why we don't have that, the amount of money, to provide the infrastructure that would provide you a world-class city. We should have the analysis, and honest analysis will bring honest solutions. And that's one thing that we should be striving for. But one thing, and I would have from the City Manager's request, because one thing I have spoke on is the General Plan Amendment. And the City Manager addressed that a General Plan Amendment was going to cost 1.75 million, and I believe two years or a year and a half to do. I believe that plan could be done by the end of the year and for less than half the cost, and it should be, and this is the reason why. We do need the jobs, and we do need the opportunities, and we do need the land uses in place that are going to make this an attraction for business to come in here. The one reason, probably the main reason, is in 2011 that that South End industrial area is built out is because we cut the DIF fees, Development Impact Fees, by 2/3. Voila, they built a lot of industrial buildings. Voila, brought a lot of jobs. Our tax, sales taxes went up. We are incrementally, that should be a clue in there somewhere, I believe. That's the things we should be looking at. We should be working, this world works at light speed. And we should, we as a city, and our city council and our staff should be working at that at every opportunity, because we are behind. That chart on the general fund shows that. We got, we're behind. We got to race harder to get to that top. And if we don't, we're going to continue to lose ground. We're going to continue to lose buying power per household, and that is unacceptable. We should be looking at that every day. That should be the main focus across this whole city and every resident in here, because we all have a vested interest in that. Because ultimately, that will pick up the quality of life if we look at these things in that prism. It's very simple. It's not, it's not us against them. It should be all for we, the people. Now, what I would have to, what I want to address on the City Attorney's Report-
Okay.
...is SC 5A, which is the constitutional amendment that's being proposed with the gas tax. And I would like the City Attorney to give an analysis on that, because can they take those funds away? They've diverted, we've passed constitutional amendment after constitutional amendment, and gas tax and road funds have been diverted out of use of roads and into other uses. And there's been some strong evidence that this measure will do that again, just like with the gas tax that was passed. We did it in 1990. In 1990, we doubled the gas tax. How are our roads improved from 1990? They have not. So when you recommend these policies, and when staff is giving you recommendations to support these policies, you should have complete and accurate information. And if you don't, that's how you, in a lot of cases, you wind up with bad decisions. It's all about how we can improve the process. That's what we should be working for, and we all should have that goal in mind. And if we do, I think you will find that we will rise up to the top.
Thank you, Roy. We go to Councilmember Marquez, closing comments?
Yeah, just a few things here. First of all, I want to say, they're not here tonight, Ms. Nichols and Mr. Gonzalez. I want to say thank you for the years that you've put into our Planning Commission. We hope in the future, things can work out, and we'll see what happens. But I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your contributions to our Planning Commissions, since you've been alternates. Thank you very much. Second of all, I've had a lot of, recently, a lot of residents call me, email me about the trash in our city. We can't rely on code enforcement because there's not enough employees to do that. We did authorize, or will be authorizing, our code enforcement to hire more people and more volunteers. But I'm asking the residents of Moreno Valley, get with your neighbors. Get with your communities out there. Form a group, maybe a couple hours in the evening or a weekend. Get a bucket. Go out there and pick up the trash. Help us clean, keep the city clean. If you see something, illegal dumping, call the police department. We want to clean up this city. I'm meeting next week with several residents, and we're going to discuss about the trash in Moreno Valley. I'm asking the residents, help us to keep this city clean. It doesn't take a lot, but, you know, our staff has been doing a hell of a job out there. I've seen them out there, even on the volunteers, and I condemn them for, I mean, they're doing a heck of a job, but we need the help, again, from the residents of Moreno Valley. Let's get this city cleaned up. So when we have visitors, we'll be proud to say this is a clean city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez. Okay, Mayor Protem Baca?
City Manager, are we short on code enforcement? That they're not responding to reports of trash in the city?
No, I'm not aware that we're not responding to requests for service or for complaints.
Okay, so I just want to say that if you do see, because it happens overnight, and it usually, from my experience, happens during the dark hours, that people dump couches, mattresses, furniture, all kinds of large, bulky items. And Waste Management will come and pick it up if you live in the City of Moreno Valley, because that's who we contract with for trash collection. But you need to call them. Many people don't. You know, many people don't, and we have these large, bulky items, you know, thrown wherever. I mean, some people, when they move out, leave these big items behind and move wherever they, you know, I don't know where they go, but they do leave these items, and all they have to do is call Waste Management, and they'll come. But they don't do that. So we have an app where you can report these items, and code enforcement will come and pick them up. That's been my experience, and I also know that you can call the city, and they'll take a report, and they'll send code enforcement out to pick them up. And I've done that many times. We've had them pick up big, giant, broken fish aquariums, mattresses, all kinds of stuff. They even go into our water banks. But you just need to report it. So if it's out there, it means that someone has not reported it, or someone has not called Waste Management to come and pick it up. So that's why the items are left behind, because, you know, not everybody knows where they are. And I've seen items, and, you know, I'm guilty, too. I'll come back in a week, and it's still there, and that's when I call it in, because, and, you know, I should be calling them in as well. But anybody, I mean, if someone were to leave a big, old, nasty, stained mattress in your front yard, you know, you'd call in. Well, you can do it when it's down the block, or across the street, or anywhere else, and it will be picked up by code enforcement. Okay, I don't expect you to drag it to your front yard and call Waste Management, because, you know, that's not what I expect you to do. But there's many alternatives than to just leave it there. I want to say that I'm very happy about what's happening with the Joint Task Force. Like I said, this is the first time in eight months that we meet. Pretty soon, we're going to have a park for children with disabilities, and that really touches my heart, because just like the rest of the world, it's made for people without disability. So now that the city is investing the money, time, and energy in that, I hope that you can be there for the grand opening, which we'll report soon. And just want to say thank you. I also want to say thank you to the outgoing Planning Commissioners. I mean, they worked, what, two years? But two years on the commission, and they did it on their own volition. It was something that they wanted to do, but I still want to say thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Baca, and I just wanted to say that Mayor Protem Baca is doing an excellent job on the Joint Task Force School District City Committee. That's why I appointed her to that committee. I think that she's doing a great job there. She was also on the school board, too. I do want to mention, as far as the bulky items, in particular, four per month, okay? All you have to do is call Waste Management, like Mayor Protem Baca mentioned. It's really easy and fast. Actually, I did it on Sunday, and they're scheduled Wednesday night to pick up a desk. And so it's really easy to do. You could do up to four items or one per week. It's really easy to do. I hope that all the residents had a beautiful Easter. I was able to celebrate Easter with my family and also with Sandals Church. And many of you know that they're located in Riverside, but they just opened a satellite campus in Moreno Valley, which is actually right over by the animal shelter, next to the animal shelter. It used to be called Renewal Christian. So it was a beautiful service, and they actually redid it, just kind of like the Riverside one, but in a smaller version. I also want to just kind of give an update as far as my open office hours. Many individuals attended on Friday. I hold those, and it was really well-attended, so thank you to those that came. And then also to the Mayor's Telephone Town Hall. That was citywide. Again, we had about 3,500, 3,600 people online. We were able to get a lot of questions answered, and I want to thank the staff for going back to those calls and addressing those concerns. Also, I had an interview with Western Magazine. They contacted my office because they're really interested in the Summer at City Hall Program, the concept that was started last year. So that's, I'm looking forward to that feature article being in the Western Magazine. And I also want to thank the outgoing commissioners as well, especially the alternates, for their service. And I did, you know, tried to make those extensions, I believe it was two council meetings ago, but unfortunately, I didn't have the votes. Okay? And I'll go ahead and end there. Thank you so much. God bless you all. Thank you. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.